All right, so let's go ahead and get started. We have a presentation coming, call the boarder. And we'll call.
Yes. Chair Craig.
Here.
Vice Chair Miller.
Here.
Director Gibbons.
Here.
Director Rennie.
Here.
Thank you, all present.
Great. See, no public, I don't think there will be any comments. That brings us to Iowa one, which we're going to talk about S V C E benefits and compensation.
Okay, thank you Chair. So put together a presentation, we got the study, pay study last Thursday. And we've been working on it, wrapping up this morning, so we don't have a chance to give this out earlier. But we kind of look at, this will be tag team between Gresh and myself, but we're looking at this to be a discussion today. We're not looking to come up with a decision. I think the only action we're gonna look for at the end of this meeting is an opportunity to meet with you again at the end of July, based on some of the feedback that we give. But we really encourage this to be a discussion type workshop.
Yeah, so looking back at the previous F and A meeting and the board meeting, I think we're kind of converging to a more holistic way of looking at benefits and compensation. So we need to show you both together. On the one hand, making, you know, S V C a great place to work. So some of these are like incangible stuff, some tangible. And making sure we're competitive. So we need to present to you, you know, what's often a piece of holistic, kind of way of showing benefits and compensation. And so today's presentation is mostly compensation, but we also want to break it into this draft, because we just got the spreadsheet from Shelley, she made a couple corrections this morning. So take it as draft, we want to, I think we're directionally correct. Get your feedback and hopefully get another meeting in last about of July. So we can be ready for the September meeting.
And just add to that, emphasizing draft. So one of the, you'll see as we go through the different areas of the agency, some titles are not there as what was approved in April. Shelley was working off of a whole chart, so that's one of the things that we want to fix. So in the, in the study for Bryce Consulting, they did look at comparison of Marin, as well as Peninsula. They picked two of our member agencies close to the area, obviously Sunningdale and Mountain View, and picked one, public power agency, Silicon Valley Power. They also looked at deferred compensation, as well as any of what we pay for benefits. In our case, a thousand dollars a month versus what the other agencies are doing. Just in overall first look at this pay study, I guess V C E does compare well to the other C C As, specifically Marin and P C E. Maybe some of you recall, I remember Tom mentioned this to me when I started, that the, I think S V C E had a better pay package than Marin, but Marin had slightly better benefits than S V C E, and I think that was by design. And indeed, as we did this study, as the results showed us. We put in the all-in, monetized the benefits and all-in compensation. I think we're slightly less than Silicon Valley Power, but relatively not too bad compared to Mountain View and Sunningdale. And last bullet point, as we go through this, is something that we didn't include in these calculations, but considering an S V C adder now, that's something we might expand.
Could I interrupt just a second?
Yeah.
Which one is Silicon Valley Power?
Santa Clara.
Thank you.
Before we get to the adder side, I just, the, when you monetize, how are you monetizing like first?
That's one of the things that we need to.
When you say monetize, you, this is like dental.
Dental. The only thing she did monetize on first would be if the employer is paying the employee's portion contribution to first. But the actual value of that annuity is not.
For the organization's contribution.
Yeah, so that's why, so as we dig into this, we need to really provide you the bottom line of how all these things come together. So that's meaningful. The S V C adder, I think that's just something, I think it's a little, it's qualitative. When you look at some of these salaries, et cetera, you say, we're the heart of Silicon Valley. What do you want to use? Do you want to use mean, median? Do you want to use median plus a certain adder for just being in here? We just like, directionally, what do you think about that? And then in general, do you want some scenarios on that? Maybe we can, so that's part of what you, we'd like feedback, so we can get back to you in July with something more.
H P was the original master of the salary survey. And H P's official corporate policy was to pay amongst the leaders. And it took me years to figure out what they meant, which it meant they targeted fifty-one percent. And so I got to Apple, I was a little quicker to understand what they were. And they targeted seventieth percent. And at the time, Sun Microsystems was targeting ninetieth percent. Turned out that the difference between fifty percent and ninety was a ten percent pay difference. Right, but, okay. So, so while they had their spot on the curve, the curve is not this hugely wide thing, as you probably find out. You know, if you go from ten to ninety percent, you can probably get a twenty percent variation in dollars. I definitely think you want to be on the upper half. So we should be above the midpoint. I don't think.
Is that median?
Well, this is, I got two sides of it.
The percentile.
Yeah. And then the other thing, which R C does the salary survey thing for their employees, we actually take everybody's salary for the salary survey. We've been super happy with it. When talking to the people who are in the original, original, the hardest part is figuring out who you're going to compare with, and what the methodology is, what elements are compared, what elements are not compared. And, you know, when, however you explain this, there has to be a very, there's a couple slides that say, here's who we pick, and here's why we think they are directly comparable to us, because this is where our people land, or where we're going to get people from.
Right, so that's the other thing.
So compared to like the city of Sunnyvale, you know, other than their environmental guy or something, how, you know, maybe some finance people. How many people from Sunnyvale would be potential targets, and how many jobs at Sunnyvale?
That's what we're picking, so we picked like the finance manager there.
No, but, but it begs the question, why would we pick Sunnyvale at all? Why would we pick an organization that more?
I think it was more on the location.
Yeah.
That was really.
I get that. But that's just what you need to explain, because it only extends.
So this is part of the discussion, we need that input. Fundamentally, the market basket, right, who are you comparing to? So we have the market basket of five agencies. We could expand to, maybe we bring in Monterey Bay, potentially. East Bay just started hiring, they haven't even published all the job descriptions and salaries yet.
We have San Francisco.
Yes.
So that's obviously a huge municipality. And we have San Jose, which is a future municipality.
Right.
And I know, right, those are two places where we would lose people to, or hire from, particularly San Jose. But again, you, you have that impedance problem of a public agency with a large public agency in both cases, thousands and thousands of employees.
Correct. And they both have a different. So that's where, in Riverside, for our I B W folks, we ended up with, I think, sixty-fifth percent high. And that was a negotiation we'd have every three or four years. Where do you want to be? City manager would start at fifty percent, they'd start at seventy-five. We'd end up in the sixties typically.
But that was a labor union.
That was a labor union. And typically, management would be around sixty percent higher than the same.
So being off of what Howard is saying, you know, and I think we've had this conversation before, there is a distinct disadvantage when you pick, so Campbell does the same thing. We pick five communities that we think are relatively similar, and the jobs are relatively similar. Problem is, that not everyone negotiates a contract on the same year. So it's a pyramid scheme. You pick five, and you, you are above the median. And every time somebody negotiates above the median, the median goes up. So it's.
And then it ripples through over the years as everybody's contract comes up.
Precisely.
And that, and then it's, it's feedback.
Yeah, it's, 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 so I would prefer we not do something of that ilk. I think the information for comparison is appropriate, but I'm not, I'm not right now comfortable saying.
This is what the answer becomes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get it.
And then the second thing, and I thought a lot about this after our last meeting before the board meeting. We, and the issue for me was, what has been brought up before is, we are a publication sector. Okay? And I'm gonna say, I moved past that debate with myself for the purposes of saying, because Jeannie made the comment, I'm saying, we're running a company. And Jeannie said, well, many cities, people would say they're running a company, but they're actually not. But it rang a bell in that I keep going, and my example is, I keep going to B T A and the county library system and other J P days here in Atlanta. And what I was saying is, our budget, or hundreds of millions of dollars, is being managed by a small group of people. That entire group of people, I'm gonna say is cross-trained. Everybody can find a way to fill in, the group can morph into a new way of doing things, depending on what's going on. Cities can't. Yes, you can have an interim city manager or replacement for the day, but you don't expect your public works director or your community development director to basically fill in for a city manager for three, six months. So I'm looking to understand how it is that we are a company, not a government.
Here's the biggest thing that I see, if I am out in the labor market, and I've got a choice between Campbell, never worked at Campbell, no, my wife, Campbell's my wife. You know, Campbell or Silicon Valley Clean Energy. And so look at my situation, right? I got a wife, I got five kids, you know, I've got the whole sort of thing. Silicon Valley Clean Energy probably gets a couple notches down for me, for two reasons.
Really, it's notched up for me.
Yeah, but look at, but look at my demands, right? If I have five kids, I'm the one who's making the money in the household and all that. I don't know if this place is gonna be here in five years. This is, this, this is a certain set of less stability. I can promise you that Campbell will be here in five years.
Your point, good comment, good, good.
No, but this is like, this has always been the trade-off in my industry, and look at, and you look at who I am, right? I'm creative and innovative and all that, but I worked for two giant companies. And I had offers from all kinds of startups, but the, the.
Security.
The need for security for a, for a company that I thought always was gonna be there. You know, and I will argue with both H P and Apple, neither of those securities were really true, but they seemed more secure than, than all the other little companies. But a city job, a government job, with a city like Saratoga or Campbell, or even Los Gatos, no. I mean, these cities.
Hey man, our, our people have been in the adder since nineteen years.
Well, you're making his point.
Yeah, but that's what it is. But I think there's, there's, that's part of the factor. And I think, so that there, how to say it in investment terms, there is a risk premium that should be associated with a small company, with a startup company. And that's where we're more like a company than we are a city.
Okay, I think that's, that's a valid point.
Because we can go out of business.
We can go bankrupt a lot easier than, than a city.
Yeah.
Well, and listen, listen. We have a lot more control of our revenue than a city does. You can, it's a lot harder to vote for more taxes, you know, a lot harder to put parcel taxes on. We can change our rates every year, so we have a lot of effect on that. We can do things to encourage more customers to join us, or we can do things that encourage them to leave us. And, you know, so we have a lot more control, like a company, of our revenue source. And I'd say we have more control of our costs also than a city does to some, some extent.
We is the leaders, but if you're like Joe employee at the bottom, you have a place that could go out of business, a place that has, has other positive elements, and you have a city. So they're really different. We're more like a business than we are.
But can I finish my point?
I was trying to, I was trying to explain your point for you.
Thank you. My other, yeah, he's gonna buy my, my signs. My other point is that when I said look at B T A and the library, I don't know what their salaries are, but I know they're high. And what I was trying to say with my point about cross-training and doing different things is, we have twenty-five people managing, what's our bottom line budget now?
Two hundred and fifty.
Okay, so two hundred and fifty million, okay. The city of Campbell has three hundred employees, and we manage a tangible budget of sixty-four million. Okay? The reason we have that many employees is we have worker bees, okay? If you analyzed, and I think you're doing that somewhat, but if you analyze the top management, you're seeing that the executive assistants and all of the senior staff are all up there. So I think you have to evaluate us as a company by the fact that we are high level. Everyone who works here is a higher level person than, without worker bees, is what I'm trying to say. So I'm trying to make a differentiation, not only are we a company, but we are different than cities.
I just think the word company is, is a tricky point.
Fine.
Without saying company, I think there is a way to say, we are different than cities.
We are different, okay. So I'm just wondering, I mean, B T A, I think Nureyeh makes three or four hundred thousand.
Probably.
Yeah. So, and you look at all per senior management and stuff. So, so that was, that was my point. How, what is it, and I think we're all going there, what is it that differentiates this organization? And what we are asking of our staff? So to me, that's one equation. And then the other equation is, what is it that we need to do to support, keep and attract quality staff? Because, and the inverse thing to going bankrupt. If we lose, if we lose staff, the impact of losing one senior staff out of twenty-five is much, is significant. And I don't think we can underestimate the impact of staff turnover on this narrowly-staffed, high responsibility, such that we don't impact the product we produce.
I.
See, I thought at work.
I think all of these great comments, it's in line with our thinking too. Maybe we can have Don go through some of the numbers. And I think you'll see at the end, we know it's still draft, you're not gonna be too far off. There's not a huge change that's really gonna be required. This is driven by a strategic plan, that says every two years, updated, just to see where we are. We're not too far from market. And with the discussion we had on the benefits.
As, that's the other, that's where I'm going.
I think both those discussions, so towards, when you come to the end of the meeting, there'll be some changes, they're not gonna be major, at least in my opinion.
One, one last thing, before we move on, is the pool that you're marketing to, the pools that you're competing with, where are they coming from in terms of, are people from Apple going to look at S V C E? Or do you want people from Apple to look at S V C E? Or are you gonna be looking for people from M C E, M B E, you know, any of the other C C As?
Or cities.
Or cities. I don't, I don't know what kind of pool is out there that, that you can really draw on, especially in some of the more specialized areas, like I look at what Hillary does. There's legislative analysts, but there's legislative analysts that don't know power the way she knows power. And the amount of time it would take to bring somebody up to speed to know that would probably be pretty long, I would think. You know, you have to know all the people that you need to be able to pick up a phone call and hit the speed dial for, and that other stuff, you know. Versus somebody who is running, let's say, the website. Websites are pretty standard. They get the input from the marketing department, they, they pick their WordPress template, and, and off they go. And, and I mean, I think we have a beautiful website, we've done a great job on it. So I just, I just, I think the board might like to see how you're, what kind of people you're looking for, because I think that kind of dictates what kind of compensation also. Because you're competing, if, if you're really looking for, you know, how many power resource manager, you know, power purchasers are really out in the industry that really know what they're doing, you're gonna have a very small market for that, again, versus a webmaster.
I just feel like I need to make the comment that, I think it's generally common, commonly thought that salaries don't really motivate people to stay. They tend to be more de-motivators. If they're, if you're not getting paid well, if your benefits are inferior, then people leave. If benefits are better, that rarely gets people to come. It's, it's more the atmosphere, it's meaningful work, it's opportunities to grow, to get promoted, to learn, things like that.
To change the world.
You, change the world. Work in a dynamic organization, not work in one that's just, you know, headache every day kind of thing. So, you know, I, I think we want to be competitive, but not say that's gonna make our, our hiring success. We need to create the right kind of atmosphere, which, you know, I had mentioned to Girish, you know, maybe it's a pizza party, but that's just a little piece of it. It's, it's, we said, yes, go spend money on new facilities. I think that could make a difference, innovation rooms, making sure we have spaces for interns. I think interns will give people here more ideas, and it'll be more interesting for the people that work here full-time to have interns. It just, the whole, the whole dynamic of it is what we want to create. The benefits, we want to make sure they're not de-motivators, for, for sure. And maybe, you know, provide some special ones that could make a difference. But I, I guess in general, I don't think that's what's gonna make the hiring.
I personally, just from the little bit that I hear, I think it's gonna be the location. If somebody can't move into the valley, and then they get a job from Bakersfield C C A, and they're like, hey guys, I'll pay you just as much, but come to live in Bakersfield. You know.
That's probably a hard one, but I think.
Right.
Monterey is, is less hard, right? Because that's an equally good environment, and, you know, there's.
Oh, San Jose, and East Bay.
Yeah, and so.
Yep.
And so.
We're in a tough market.
Yeah, and it's going to be, we're, we're gonna have to be special in far more than just a number.
Exactly.
So we are, we'll morph, where we are headed with July and even at the board meeting, I think we'll broaden the discussion, compensation benefits being only one of it, and that was part of the slides we gave you last night. There are the de-motivators and the motivators. Now we've touched base on what are we doing in the motivators too. So it's a complete package, but this is also the bottom piece.
And you know that Jeannie's gonna come in and make pancakes for you guys, so.
Yes.
Pancake breakfast.
Yeah, sounds like we're all too.
No, I.
You don't want.
As long as it's real maple syrup.
I was just gonna say.
I just came, I'm from New York, so.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I'll bring, I'll bring.
Let's look quickly at this.
They do, they do music pancake breakfast in our high school every year. And they, they serve two thousand people pancakes. And the whole thing is just totally stopped at this point. They actually have set aside on an annual basis, my spatula, my machine and my grill, because it dawned on everybody, I'm a time-motion guy, I make half of all pancakes in the morning. So they're like, they put one volunteer behind me to keep me fed with batter. And they put me on the giant grill with the slightly longer-handled spatula. And so.
Did you used to work at Denny's?
I worked in a, I worked in a grocery store, right? And it was manual checking back.
Oh, yeah. I thought you were gonna say in the company that used to be called Iowa.
I had a friend who worked at Denny's, and they have, Denny's University, where they teach you how to crack gates, at a particular raid, flip pancakes. And he was good.
And it kills me watching these people, the superintendent, which nobody would correct. He'd flip them over and smack them down. So he was giving you little leather cakes. And then, and then there are the people next to him, like, you've never seen a picture of a pancake? They don't have black edges. They are gold and brown. Well, yours might not be cooked in the middle. I'm like, yeah, but it's not burnt.
Go on, go back.
All right. I don't know how I'm supposed to compare with that story. But I'll try.
I'll just, a question about what kind of people and where do we come from? I think it goes to the points made previously too, about what kind of organization we have here. If you compare us to a city, we have more top-heavy. In a city, typically, you'd have the management professional ranks. That's essentially what we are.
Right.
So in a utility, you have the resource management group. This is, this is resource management. Then you have the operations and engineering groups, utility, we don't have that. It's the resource management group, which tends to be small, controls entire budget. And you don't go to school for this necessarily, there's no utility, resource management. So typically, the skills you get are a combination of engineers who learn finance skills, or like finance, investment people who learn enough about engineering and technology. I've seen both those folks basically come in to our resource management groups. And then some folks will morph into the legislative and regulatory side. So they may start as a resource planner, do modeling, financial analysis, and then they're done with that, say, I wanna do something else. And then a natural outgrowth is going to the regulatory and legislative side. You can see that in Monica, who we just hired. She came in initially in Palo Alto, running residential programs. So she has a bachelor's degree in, I'm not sure what's, arts maybe. But she was running residential programs on water efficiency and electric efficiency. After doing that for about ten years, she got hired on the resource planning, and she started to run spreadsheets for analyzing power contracts. After doing that for about ten years, moved into working with joint powers agencies on contract negotiations and working on renewable contracts. So it's, there's a lot of on-the-job training which comes in there. Every once in a while, Blue Moon, you'll get someone, smart MBA kind of person, coming in, picking this stuff up in about four, five years. Just this alphabet soup of abbreviations, et cetera, you have to learn.
So, so part of it, Apple had a statement of who they wanted to hire. Think of a company with a hundred thousand people saying who they wanna hire in a single statement, right? They want these bright, creative, innovative, and had to have the word innovative in it.
Yeah.
And hardworking. I mean, there was this like super short list of the attributes for the employees. And, and this'll sound weird, and Apple's arrogant like that. They also had the best in the world, best in the industry. And so that meant.
Yeah.
Literally, they hired a kid out of college, okay, he was a Ph D guy, but he got a million dollar offer. So that's not the space that we're in. What, we want innovative, flexible. It seems like we should be able to articulate a statement that says, who are the attributes of employees that we want? And it probably doesn't include best in the world. And it doesn't include, you know, inflexibility, you know, I mean, it probably really emphasizes the flexibility and the innovative, creative side.
We'll put more on that, you already have that in your job descriptions that I look at, so I inherited this. You have some language in there already, which says.
We never articulated an organizational kind of philosophy of the type of person we're trying to hire. And of course, we all know you can't say, young, bright-eyed, bushy-tailed, I mean, but you can't say creative and flexible and innovative and.
So I wanna connect back to something Liz brought up earlier about doing, people being cross-trained and being able to do more. So that's something that's part of our current budget we're looking at. Can actually do something about broadbanding, where one employee could take on multiple roles, so maybe they, because we're gonna go through phases of our evolution, right? So just say on the program side, right now, we are in the design and planning of our programs. In about a year or so, as we move into implementation, we don't need to have a group of people doing design, planning and implementation. That same group, a few people can morph into the life cycle of the product. And then also within a certain group, just say we have three account reps that we want. Well, you can have kind of a series, right? Because you wanna retain them, you just don't wanna have account rep, and once they experience, the only place they have to go is some other. have to go is some other.
Some other house.
Utility. So we can say, we're gonna have three, but we have maybe four levels depending on this kind of the skill levels that you acquire, you can move up there. And once they move on, we may hire again at the low level.
We did that at Apple, there's six, six levels for engineer. And they just get called engineer, software engineer, hardware engineer. Behind the scenes, they're on a different, and they have an inherent title based on that, but the generic title used to avoid the issue of, oh, I wanna be a software engineer three and he's a three and I'm better than he is.
Did they still have fellows?
It's a DUS, distinguished engineer scientist. We use that for like the last twenty-five years. And there's actually like a DUS too, but nobody's supposed to know about that.
To Grish's point, as we present the budget to you first of July and the final one in September, you guys come from cities, you're used to seeing the regular boxes and org charts. What's the flavor for broadband approach? That's something.
We, we have the boxes and org charts in our city, but you know, you think about your day labor type of class, every single person in my city is required to manage contracts. So our groundkeepers manage contracts. Everybody has access to a computer because we have only fifty-something employees and we outsource so many things, it made most sense for the guy caring for the park to be responsible for the contract for the pest control company, for example, cause he's gonna be the guy who's most impacted. And so even though there is a box that says groundkeeper, groundkeeper one, that guy still has this weird administrative function that he would never find in a groundkeeper one in just about any other city. So I have no problem with the boxes. There's a philosophy statement that says everybody's gonna be cross-trained and the job responsibilities are broader than narrow definitions.
So you were saying a phrase about what kind of employer, employee we're looking for. I think you could do something similar with what kind of employee we, employer we are, which has to do with the fact.
Right.
That there are no ceilings, there are opportunities. I mean, that's what I think is a very strong motivator.
A lot of people just hate stratification in organizations, it implies bureaucracy.
Right, right.
My brother was at IBM and the guy next to him got a door. And I'm like, we need a door. Apparently getting the door was a huge promotion at IBM.
So, we get it.
Yeah, alright.
So just throw.
That's the other two meetings.
Yeah, click through like these slides really fast if you have questions.
It's a good discussion. It's just a few numbers you've seen before, but just to emphasize, ninety percent of the budget is power supply. We have twenty-one FTEs in the budget, currently fifteen people on board managing two hundred fifty-three million dollars budget. Personnel cost, about one and a half percent of operating revenues. Just for kicks, I looked at VTA's two thousand seventeen CAFR, that's eighty-one percent.
This whole slide I just always hate. We don't have twenty-one people managing two hundred fifty-three million dollar budget. That whole thing is a couple people that do contracts and cash comes in and cash goes out. It's not a managed thing, it's in how we set up the contracts. And there's very few people that are involved in that. Sure, our organization is that big and that's how many people we have, but there's just no way to compare that to the way a city budget gets run. Most of that two hundred and fifty-three million is set by the contracts of the business that we're in. And, and yes, money moves, but there aren't a bunch of decisions being made. The decisions have all been made.
That's right.
Now, when you chop out of that, the other ten percent, that's, that's an interesting number because we've got twenty-five million and probably fifteen people that are doing a ton of work to figure out what's the optimum way to spend that money between our fixed costs and our programs and, you know. So anyway, I hate that line and then I hate the comparison to VTA because talk about, what's, was your word, medial worker?
I don't know.
Worker bee, worker bees. They're eighty percent worker bees and they're worse than that. They're, shoot, I'm wrong video, I better not say anything. You know, they have a, they have a defined job that is constrained by their union.
Yeah.
How's that negative, if I may be correct?
Point here, the, I think the point we, by the way, your first point, I think we can easily split out as a great point. What's the manageable budget and the uncontrolled budget? It's basically market-based, right? Ninety percent is going to be.
But it's set by the contracts that we get and the policy that we have on power.
Correct. And we can show that, I think that'll be an interesting statistic to show that too. The other one is more just for calibrating. So when I think about this, all of you are on city councils and boards. I would bet that ninety percent of your discussions on labor, each of us do math in our head, right? When it comes to percentages of say salaries, et cetera. The point here is when the labor budget is more than seventy percent of the total budget, asking for say a two percent increase for your employees is a one point four percent increase in your entire budget. So that's the only point we wanna make over here. It's almost like, how do you recalibrate for SVC?
So let's get into just a summary of the positions. I kinda, I arbitrarily kinda picked the ninety to a hundred and ten, saying that's the acceptable range to be to the median of the market study. We had three positions that are currently above a hundred and ten percent. Most of the positions, as Grish mentioned at the beginning, are kind of in that middle range. And then we have one position that's, that's under the ninety percent.
So we just take a little money from the top three, give it to the bottom, and we go ahead.
We got it. So these next three or four slides, we'll just look at each of the groups and the job titles. Again, we don't have every job title for, for every group, we're working off an old org chart. But, so just to give you an idea of the top line, that would be the max for that range and for that job title, doesn't necessarily mean that's what the person is getting. That's what the market is, which was the median of the five agencies that we looked at. And when you throw in total cash, what that is, is the ten percent deferred comp addition for the retirement planning. Add that to that, the twenty-two nine-one-seven is how the twenty-five two-oh-eight. And then total comp would be, you look at SVC total comp, that would include the thousand dollars that we have for the health benefits as well as Medicare and any sort of short-term disability, things like that. So that would be the, how we derive those three numbers. And then we showed the variances for each one compared to the market median. And basically the next four or five slides will be the same methodology, just with the titles. You'll see somewhere above, somewhere below.
So that says we're not paying our chief executive officer enough?
No, it just says it's less than five, five point four less.
Than the median.
But, no.
I'll let you answer that one.
Yes, I, I have to say, I don't, I'm sorry, I wanted to get through the slides, but I wanna make sure I understand what this is saying. So the, the base maximum is Silicon Valley's maximum.
Correct.
The market is a median, not a maximum.
That's, I, that's one of the questions I do have for Bryce is, I think they use the max, I just haven't confirmed that.
So I think we need to use a max and I think we need to state the max if we're gonna compare it. Okay. And then, I'm trying to think, so we understand what the, I'm gonna say the core salary is. I'm not sure we need to understand, let's see, the variance there, the total cash.
So total cash is just the deferred comp piece.
Yes, and then the market total cash and then the variance and so on. Do we need those middle three? Can we, do we just need to go to Silicon Valley total comp with all the factors in it? Cause too many columns makes it too complicated.
To tell your story, I think the total comp line is good.
Okay.
And the basis.
The last three in the, in the base, okay.
Well, I'm not sure I understand, what's the difference between base and market? Well, how can market be more than base?
Market is outside of us.
That's the five agencies.
The market basket, the five entities we compare to, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, PCE, MCE.
And their average was twenty-three. And then what's the base max?
That would be for Grish's table.
That's my monthly salary.
Oh, okay.
Or in the case of executive assistant, that's the maximum for that particular position.
We have the pay ranges for everything.
Yeah, right.
Okay. And I'll confirm what the market is, the max is what I, I think it is because she wouldn't have known.
But I don't think we need.
The middle, the middle three.
Okay.
And they don't give you a beginning and max range.
There's no range.
There is no range.
Just max.
Yeah, it was just max.
Alright.
You can take it all out, I mean, there's a way to get all that, yeah. But I, I think if we're trying to figure out our philosophy, we set the max and then they set the ranges to be what they need to be. I drank.
Thanks. And so we cover here, Grish and Grant.
Administration.
Administration, so this would be the four folks here. IT analyst, actually didn't surprise me considering this, this market for IT that came in, one of the positions that came in below the ten percent range, or actually say under ninety percent. And we have the administrative analysts and administrative assistants came in. If you look at the last column there for variance, pretty close to market.
And then the director. Can I cover the?
I covered yours, you can.
Oh man, choking on this.
Marketing, I, director of customer care, I think that title tripped up Bryce Consulting, so I'm issues finding the data for that, so it's one of those things we have to come back on. But the other folks, and some of these titles may be changing in the budget process, but for the most part, I'm like the marketing group, you look at the last column, fairly close to, to market when you throw in all-in benefits, but we don't have the calculus evaluated in there. Power resources, this was a little surprising to me. Look at the last column, an all-in perspective, just looking, in this case, the cities, the two cities, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, there's just no data for these three, but, so we're just looking at really three data points and most part we're well above market for, on the power resources.
We still lost people.
Yeah, for other reasons.
Yeah, that's why, that's a good point, right? It's.
But you also picked three very expensive cities too, which.
Well, they're actually not included.
There's no cities or, they also have power.
This is just Silicon Valley, PCE and MCE.
This group, it's very difficult to recruit. It is very difficult because there is just a history of what you have to have to actually manage the portfolio. That two hundred million dollars a year and that first management, et cetera, it's very difficult.
Yeah, these are the three guys that have the two hundred.
Two hundred million.
That is it. And, you know, I've been in touch with some of my folks in Riverside too, just talk about CCAs, encouraging them to be open to joining CCAs in Southern California. And it's tough, it's tough to get them to consider moving.
So may I ask, my, my understanding would be this is where we're starting, okay? And then we're going to talk about benefits and benefits are gonna add to this.
Right.
That's, it's gonna be a tough discussion.
So, yeah, but we'll add benefits for the others. So it'll be an apple strap.
Sorry, in terms, it doesn't matter which line it is, it's just that the variance on the far right column is going to go up. We're going to be, instead of being nineteen point five, we might be twenty-four point two because we're increasing benefits. That's gonna make it a harder sell, frankly.
You should also notice, the director of power resources is not much below the CEO.
Mm-hmm.
It's almost making the same amount. Maybe five hundred dollars a month last or something.
So if I may, my comment wasn't so much the dollar amount, it's if we're heading to get the board to talk about improving benefits as an attraction.
Don't, don't stop on this slide for the discussion.
Yes.
Stop on the slide with negatives.
But this just proves the point that, you know, it can't be just about pay.
It's not, it's not.
I'm just saying.
So let's go through this, cause we'll see the rest of the numbers.
Okay.
Cause we gotta get to what your pitch is gonna be.
About fourteen hundred.
You know, and the difference, actually, this makes me think about a little more. Where are you gonna pull the power people from? People that already live close by, we can get people to do the marketing jobs and stuff. They probably already live in the area, they don't have to relocate here. It's more likely you're gonna have to pull these from further away and they're gonna have to relocate. So they're gonna be thinking about the cost of living more and that might be why these have to be hired.
These are critical jobs, complex and complicated jobs.
Where we get these people? Palo Alto, Silicon Valley Power, where you're gonna get them? The PG&E folks who are doing resource management, resource planning, many of them are San Francisco, Marin, Berkeley, they, they take the bark route because their resource management folks work out of San Francisco. So you may have some folks who live in the peninsula, but most of them are.
East Bay.
So East Bay, you can pick that one.
That's where they are, so.
And the only way you ever get them to come down here is big salaries.
That's right. And the same, so with Palo Alto and Silicon Valley Power, they're both per entities. So if you want to get them out early, between fifty and fifty-five is when the slope for CalPERS is the steepest. And so that's the trade-off we need to look at. If you're gonna get someone in their fifties out from there, there needs to be some kind of trade-off there, so.
So my point, as I said, is slightly different. When you have these, be aware that adding benefits that will increase the delta on the upside.
Change this slide, you can't leave a nineteen percent up, she keeps looking at it and saying this is the problem.
Twenty, I'm only at twenty-three point.
Exactly. Change the slide, go to the next one. Hopefully it's got negatives.
This is, again, we're working out the old title for regulatory analyst and we'll also add the numbers for the manager. We're in the midst of hiring analysts right now.
Interviews tomorrow.
Yeah. So programs, these are brand new that we added to the org chart, so we do not have them costed out. That will be included in July. And so that's just the salary compensation side of it. And I think then we get into discussion of follow-up from last boards we.
So back on the salary thing, you arbitrarily set ninety to a hundred and ten, is good.
Yeah.
And just as I sat here looking at them, I was interpreting every page where it was positive as we're overpaying, negative as we're underpaying. And so you're gonna have to find some way to say, it's positive, but only by a little bit, so it's still okay.
Exactly what I read, exactly.
Cause everybody's gonna see positive, we're, we're paying that too much.
Is this even the right kind of slide, the slides that we wanna show?
We gotta have it someplace.
It might send us in the wrong direction.
I mean, has the board asked for a salary survey?
Yes.
Strategic planners updated every two years.
Yeah, it's already built in.
But I meant in terms of, of a, cause I thought mostly what we were talking about is benefits versus salaries.
But the board kept saying, we need to look at total compensation. But I think the problem here is, is that.
They, I think they meant benefits when they said that, but.
This is not the way to lead this discussion on.
I agree, I agree.
This is supporting data someplace in some way. If you, if you lead with this, we're gonna rattle, is, is zero or positive ten, you know, where's the real right number to be at?
And then I won't look like such a bad chair after all.
And then you're already at ninety to a hundred and ten.
Different way of solving that problem.
It's a private discussion we had over golf.
I don't know, is there any, I would have to imagine with the amount of interest in CCAs that this company probably wasn't able to factor in the latest and latest demands on salary.
For instance, East Bay is not included and they, I think they're in the market for about twenty positions and I think that will have a significant impact. San Jose is not hiring.
They're coming on it.
And.
You start to know the impact when you start to lose the people that you don't wanna lose.
Right, cause we've already lost people. And these other companies are barely even starting up these days.
Well, they're coming after our experienced people.
They are. We're targets, there's no question.
Gets to your point, what was mentioned at the board also, it's keeping versus getting people right then.
But if I, if I don't, if I'm not tied to this place, I'm sure gonna go live in Pacific Grove instead, especially if. But if I, if I don't, if I'm not tied to this place, I'm sure gonna go live in Pacific Grove instead, especially if I'm getting the same salary. See you guys later. That's, that's impossible to compete with.
So would St. Louis start at their own?
Yeah, no, if you're in a position where you could move, that's.
You don't have kids and tour and all that.
Yeah, those are gonna be issues.
Yeah.
I think.
All right, well, let's.
But we were hopeful that it wasn't a salary discussion, because we all know right off, it must be competitive on salary, but the, the make or break is in the rest of the pile.
Yeah, so that's why, so we're gonna have, what we're hoping to do is have two working sessions. This will be the first one with you, and then back in the end of July, another working session with you, where it's gonna be a more holistic presentation. We will bring in the benefits and the salary to look at the total picture before we go to the board. So we've got some input.
We have a board meeting in July.
We're not taking anything.
Okay, we don't have a board meeting in August.
Correct.
So we're trying to get it all done in Sept- I'm just saying, we're trying to get it all done in September when there's only one board meeting and the fiscal year starts October 1st, right?
Yeah, so potentially it's part of the budget. So I think when you, and we can look at this, so what I'm thinking of, my initial thoughts here, making some changes. There are some things to discuss, like the IT analysts. It's 13%. Get that within the range, right? So if I say green is between 95 and 105% of the median is the green zone. All right, try and get all of the employees within that green zone. I'll be in the green zone, too, at that point. So it's like, hey, you're good. The benefits, the big change is going to be self-directed, and I think what you're gonna get here, which is really good, is more choices for employees. And so it's not just the.
It shouldn't really cost us more, right?
I think it will cost a little bit more because we are a little chintzy on our benefits. So some things which you can really like, like on medical. The fact that we're limited only for the employee, we're budgeting $1,000. To me, that's, we should just say $1,000 useful for whatever you want for your whole family. Now, once we put. What? So those are like small changes where right now, a single person is taking 650, so we're saving 350 bucks. All right, so there will be an increased cost for our budget. I think some of the other bennies when we put in over here, like commute benefits, et cetera, maybe we'll have like a part of, say, $3,000 to $5,000 of bottom money, but we're gonna have maybe 10 benefits that people can apply toward that. And one employee is gonna just say, hey, I want my EV, and the other person's gonna say, I want my health club membership.
So sorry, I thought we had talked about $15,000 per employee. Where did that occur?
That was the, that was the hiring fudge.
I thought that included benefits.
It was to, for a rush.
No, that's just a one-off. That is just a one-off kind of deal. Relocation expenses.
Other than credit.
Yeah. So.
I'm just surprised we didn't offer free power.
My $24 a month doesn't count.
So to your point, I think on the compensation, we'll clean that up for the next meeting, add some data points, but I think for the most part, those are just fixes we'll make.
But don't lead into it. Don't lead.
Right, it's more for, just to let you guys know where we stand on that. And then we get into the self-directed approach. As Grish was talking about, this is one where, maybe the next slide. This is one where, instead of someone has a thousand bucks for the health benefits and others have, they're covered by their spouse and don't need it. Do we want to, and this is really just discussion, just, do we want to just say transportation, health, put it all in one bucket? And just say, here's 15 or 20,000, whatever it is, use it for.
I think that's what Netflix does. And Netflix does the same thing with their vacation and holiday. They just give every person a number of days and they use it any way they want. Holidays, medical, and vacation are all just a lump sum. You use it any way you want.
Pay time off.
Right. One of the things we didn't say the other week is you wanna have a cap, and you don't want somebody to accrue 2,000 hours of vacation. So you've got, don't forget to put that into this equation. So when someone gets bought out of their vacation time, there's a point at which they have, cannot longer accrue. They must be bought out to get a half cap.
240 seems to be the normal for that.
240 was interesting because I mentioned that exact same number in our city, and they have a freaking cap. Well, they, they ended up surveying every city in the Bay Area, blah, 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 and it negotiated out at 600. So for, yeah, for us private sector guys, 240 or 320 are numbers that come up a lot. But in a city, 600.
Well, you know why? Fire, police and fire. Those guys are big on that.
Yeah, so I would just say 240 is gonna be, I think, too low compared to a lot of.
But they just need to think about it.
There needs to be a number.
I would just try to put that in there.
Maximum vacation you can carry up.
So in terms of your bucket, I think putting things with cash value, health, transportation, things like that, whatever else in here would fit, health club, even education. I would put in one bucket. I would put the cash out PTO in a separate bucket, maybe with deferred comp. I don't quite know.
Cash out PTO doesn't cost us anything.
I'm just, well, that's my point. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm, I'm looking for a grouping, which we were talking about, how would we bundle them? And I, I'm just saying, I think we would bundle them. And maybe that one doesn't even need to be here. It's just a policy that we will be.
Yeah, fewer bundles are, I think, more the big thing. And somebody's just trying to explain it, like you say, since it's all sort of like a cash kind of thing and eventually it could flow into your pocket, you could say education, but education could also be student loan.
Yeah, we were saying the same thing.
Because if they chose to say, oh, I want $1,000 on that line and less on healthcare, because they were a young person, the fact that they're paying their student loan with it, or they're currently taking classes, is, or it goes to their paycheck, is immaterial, it's the same amount of money. And that's just one of the big crazes right now, to hire people out of colleges and loan.
I'm not so keen on that. I would rather we let them get their money and choose where it went.
No, but it's a marketing thing, because it's the same thing in the end, right? They're moving around their $12,000.
I'd maybe allow you a little more on that one. Okay, so that's what I'm just saying. I, I think putting monetary things with a cap within the, within the bucket.
The only thing that I saw in this bucket that was a little bit different was the EV rebate, you know, because that's more synergistic with part of our mission statement. So it seems like that has a slightly different prioritization. So do you move that in transportation, or do you just leave it all in the same one? I don't really care. You're probably better off giving more flexibility, because you had seven buckets, each with different amounts and different restrictions. Nobody can figure out.
Right, I'm agreeing. We don't wanna do that. And you brought up something just off the top there. You have to decide what the policy is for board members, like on an EV rebate and stuff like that. I'm gonna guess none of us could take advantage of an EV rate, even if it was offered to us because of our MVP secrets.
We're not employees like we are, we're employees of our town, so that's a different story. We get whatever employees can get. But here, we're not employees in this organization.
So I'm jumping, I'm, so, yeah, so I'm jumping because I was thinking that it's one of the programs. You're right.
I'm just wondering about like the EV charging here. I'm not sure that we should be charging at these stations.
I'm sure there's some of that someplace. So we'll need a policy or something like that.
Well, there is a charging station downstairs that anybody could log into.
Yes, but it's free to employees and we wouldn't take advantage of that.
I think it's free to everybody in the building, isn't it?
Visitor is.
Yeah. Oh, if that's the policy, then we'll be okay. If it was just.
We put in there visitor.
Yeah. Oh, then we can do that.
Yeah.
But I get what you're saying. And none of this would be for us.
So I'm thinking over here, so there are four big things moving out. One is, there's gonna be a bucket for self-directed, and we'll try to make, and so we're gonna do a survey that we're gonna ask employees for their ideas on what are the kinds of benefits. So we're gonna tell them where we headed is, the board's probably going to give us a fixed budget and a menu of options that you can, so what would you want in that menu? So that's one part. The next is the salary part. You've given us some feedback on that. We'll address that. Then there's a procedures kind of part, things like telecommuting, cashing out, you know, flexible spending account. Those are things that are all valuable to employees, but those are more procedural. And then we have PTO and additional leave. I think what we heard from the board last week, pretty much a slam dunk on Christmas, New Year's.
Oh, yeah, that one sounded like.
That seemed okay. So I think, so what we're gonna do is, and we have an initial spreadsheet of all those kinds of bennies, too, from cities and CCAs. We'll start to look at all of that, even big time off. I think we wanna graduate it also. Folks who may be here from a seniority standpoint, first year you may not get as much vacation as in your second year or third year.
I'm actually fine with that for everything. You know, some places it's appropriate, some places it's not, but increasing somehow the level of everything with seniority.
That's the stickiest thing, keeping people.
Yeah, I actually like that. I totally, I really do like that, because I think that is.
The one thing you didn't mention, and I don't know, is it just because it was somehow implicit already, which is sort of the morale money thing, the pizza parties and the pancakes?
Yeah, so.
It seems like you really wanna bite that off as sort of a CEO budget line item, not a per-employee number.
Yeah, so we have that separate.
Employee goodwill, we're gonna just build that.
Literally, so.
Put that someplace else and get a number.
So the survey we are looking at, so one is, we're gonna ask employees for just ideas for what goes into the self-directed part. The other is saying, to make this a better place, the best place you could work in, what do you want? What else would you want in terms of whether it's space?
Big table.
Job opportunities, you know, what are the other things that you want in terms of flexibility of the kinds of work that you do? Communications, some fun activities. And we're also gonna talk about the board saying, we can expand into the next areas, so there's some things coming down the pipe.
Do we already give approval for this last week?
Thought we were done.
Negotiating.
Yeah.
You're negotiating.
One thing that, that I always liked, I tend to be, you know, when I'm at my desk, and I'm assuming some amount of other people like this, when I'm at my desk, it's kind of churned through things. But if I need to be creative, I like to go have a couch to kind of sit back on with a tablet of paper. I don't see any place here where you can get away from your desk for a little bit.
You're exactly right. You actually, we looked at the survey.
Privacy room, but that's.
Yeah, the privacy room was designed.
That's different.
Those for mothers. I think, so we actually looked at the survey just a couple of days ago, and that was one of the highly valued pieces. People want their private spaces where they can go and whether it's think or whatever, and also some casual places for us to just talk. Every once in a while, we have a bunch of people who congregate for lunch together. And it's great, but it's not a great space for us. That's why it doesn't happen too often. So making those spaces for those informal conversations to innovate.
And I'd like to put one other suggestion. It's sort of an employee benefit, but sort of a, at the library, all of the employees get a standing work desk. Or they get an adjustable work desk.
We have that.
Oh, oh, all the cubicles have it? Oh, it didn't look like it. I'm sorry.
Nobody's standing up.
Nobody's standing up.
We do have that option.
Those things, I, I mean, everybody at the library was just raving about those when they moved in, especially since their old office was.
We'll add equipment as another. Actually, two of our new employees, before they joined, reached out to me asking if we had someone who could do an ergonomic assessment, because both of them had issues in the past and wanted to make sure that they were set up right over here. So those.
Those are just HR kinds of things.
Yeah.
I, I would like to comment, I am not a big supporter of telecommunication, tele, working, the right word is. Telecommuting, thank you. I would get there sometime. I think it's much more of a CEO discretion. I would like the CEO to have that discretion. I would not like to see it as a benefit.
I agree with you in that.
Thank you. And then the Christmas to New Year's break, just so you know, in Campbell, it is an unpaid time off. Okay, so just when you see that we do close down, it's unpaid. If people wanna use their vacation time, they can, but it is unpaid.
For the whole week.
For the whole week, except for the two, the two days, whatever is, is there.
And I think in our city, it's been unpaid, and I think it's been paid, you know, where we were and which contract.
And so I'm thinking, our thoughts right now is, I may ask for some authority, as I look at other CCAs, too. Most of them tend to have, and cities with some kind of admin leave or management leave.
Yes. For those people who have to sit in and watch our long boring board meetings.
Yes.
So I think that's, I think that flexibility, I think the Christmas to New Year's, there are two choices. It's either paid or unpaid, that's one. The other, I like the idea of telecommuting and having, let it be at my discretion.
The worst thing about telecommuting is the guy who's gone all the time.
Yeah.
Right, and you, you need.
I'm not a fan of it.
You need to have people interacting and figuring out, especially if we're in a cross-training environment, seeing what doing.
You can make sure it's, feels like a privilege, not a, not a right.
Yes, I'm not a fan. So I would rather have it this way where it's on a one-off basis, a very limited, you know, it's, someone has a meeting in San Francisco, or it's a late night, something with the board. All right, that's fine. Just don't come in the next day, or leave early, something like that, work from home, work from the train. And I, I'm thinking I will propose something on, somewhere on the admin leave side. Because I think where we are with the four weeks, I think if you go to the Christmas holiday and some admin leave, I think we'll be.
And then more with seniority.
And with seniority.
That's my bet.
The trick on that is figuring out who it really applies to, because this organization seems to be a culture of most everybody showing up at the board meetings.
Correct.
But in our city, the only people who get the admin leave officially like the city clerk, because they're stuck at the meetings and the city manager. I mean, there's, there's not that many people that are officially eligible for admin leave, and there's actually two tiers in our city.
Yeah, we have the same.
And we may do the same thing in thinking of it, because we have a couple of employees who are exempt, who do get overtime. We have like two or three. But the majority of the employees are non.
So I think, touched on this already, but the next steps would be to, we're gonna relook at the compensation study, make sure that those numbers are still valid. Mention that we are right now conducting a survey with our folks to get their ideas, their inputs into benefits. So that list that we showed you will change. And come back to you with an idea of what that, once we build in the compensation, the budget, what that self-directed cap might be. And before we adjourn today, we'd like to get a convivial to see if end of July is a bit. I was looking for the meeting and I didn't see it.
No, we lucked your dates.
I, I just realized it already been set up.
And I promised not to send it out. There is some kind of automatic function. Every time I put Silicon Valley Clean Energy in, it sees, it picks up a previous meeting with the title and sends it out to everybody.
As long as I'm.
Once you decline it, it sends it out all over again.
Did I?
And what are you guys using for your calendar?
I have no idea.
You updating your iOS?
Yes, I'm meticulous about it.
Oh.
So. How late in July do you want this?
Preferably the last week, just to give us enough time.
Week on the 23rd?
Yeah, whatever it is, yeah.
So 23rd, we'd like to know. 24th, we have exact minutes, so we don't want.
The 23rd would be viable for me. There is a.
It's a Monday.
Yeah, there is a possibility that I will be gone by the 26th.
So 23rd going once?
I have a $10.45 disappointment. Could we do earlier, later?
We could do Monday, 8 to 10?
8 to 10 or afternoon?
Oh, afternoon.
Afternoon, the traffic will be terrible at 8 to 10, but I, I'll accommodate.
What about afternoon?
Afternoon is fine on the 23rd.
1 to 3 or?
Pretty good.
12, 12 to 2? Better?
No, actually.
Twelve thirty to?
Twelve, yeah, lunch to noon is good.
We'll have lunch here.
Yeah.
You know, I guess coming at noonish.
Yeah, if we can get out by two, that would be awesome. Only because of traffic going back downtown.
So I, I mean, I could probably be here, yeah, eleven thirty would be pushing it, so, yeah. Quarter to twelve, twelve is easy.
Twelve's easy for you? Twelve, twelve? Okay, twelve to two.
Perfect. That's why I didn't see it.
See, it automatically pops up. And I start to type it, so when I press that, it sends it out to everybody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Don't do that, correct.
See, I, I was trying to, I used to do SVE, SVCE, so I thought it wouldn't show up. I put in finance and it still shows up.
No, so it shows up, but the trick is do not edit that.
I know. I, I, I am, I think I figured it out. We'll see what happens.
Yeah, it's just, it's shown up on me, inviting the four of you.
Yeah, here's, so here's the deal for these meetings, right? Even though it shows that this is invited to me, alls I ever do is accept or decline.
And then I create my own meeting on my own server calendar.
And I can share with my wife and I can put his travel time and all the other stuff. As soon as I touch the one that I was invited on, all hell breaks loose. So it's only yes, no, or maybe.
Love this product, 'cause yeah, I'm sharing stuff with my.
Which, which calendar are you using?
I just use that.
Oh, just, I use one called Fantastical. It's great.
Yeah.
But yeah, everything is connected with my wife and now all the stuff, if for like these meetings, I type in Silicon Valley, it says, oh, here's your, your location, and I say, yeah. So then it's on the map and it computes travel time for me, so it.
It doesn't work on mine.
It beeps for me when it's time for me to go. I would show you how to do it, but I'm afraid it might send it to everybody. But to do, yeah.
Just don't send out Rob's giving free signs to everybody.
That's only a special deal for the two of you.
It's called an in-kind.
In-kind signs.
You didn't tell us what your cost per sign was, though. That was the missing piece.
Can't remember off the top of my head. What cost do you need? Don't say a dollar.
Great, so we have consensus then to have a special meeting on Monday, July twenty-third from twelve to two here at the SEC office.
That's, that's it for the agenda today. Okay, any committee discussion points or comments? All right, then we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.